I now call the City Council to order. Laura, will you take the rule call, please?
Councillor Elkins.
Here.
Councillor Foster.
Here.
Councillor Gore.
Here.
Councillor Jarrett.
Here.
Councillor La Barge.
Here.
Councillor Maori.
Here.
Councillor Moulton.
Here.
Councillor Nash.
Here.
And Councillor Perry.
Here.
Councillor President, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Laura. Now that we are convened, we will take public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. The raised hand feature is on the bottom menu bar under reactions. If you're calling by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me. To ensure equal access and because of the open meeting law, technical problems such as not being able to raise your hand are the only thing the chat function is used for. And the chat function will only be available during public comment. I think somebody has their microphone on. Thank you, all right. We cannot accept comment over chat, private chat, or chat only visible on Zoom during public meeting is antithetical to an open public process in violation of the council rules for public participation and violates the spirit and potentially the law of open meeting law. If you want to submit a written public comment, please email it to and it will be sent to all councillors and will be part of the public record. I want unmute each raised hand in the order raised to make a comment. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to two minutes. You are in no way obligated to use the full two minutes. But if you do, but if you do, after two minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. Tonight, we will also be using our timer as well.
Actually, Councillor Nash, it's not working tonight, so I will just gently interrupt at two minutes.
Oh, that'll work really well.
Okay, all right.
We're all about gentle interruptions. Okay. According to the council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it is your time to speak. So while your comments should be directed to us, you will understand when we do not respond. Our rules also state the councillors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. Your protected speech is a constitutional right and one that we ask that you wield with consideration and respect for all and do so with the recognition that the public space that grants you that freedom is shared equally by everyone. Also, according to open meeting law, if someone is disrupting a meeting, they may be removed. You may speak on any topic, it doesn't need to be an item on the agenda. I ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon. Only the person recognized has the floor and all comments are to be directed to the City Council. This meeting can also be watched on Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube and other platforms. So I see some raised hands here and I see we're going to start with Carrie. You may, Carrie, you may turn on your video.
Hi.
And you have the floor for two minutes.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Foster gently.
I'll try to keep it to two minutes. Hi, my name's Carrie Cuthbert. My husband Scott Laidlaw and I live at 122 Pine Street, which is right next to the Florence Congregational Church in Bombix. And wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We were some of the folks who sent an email to you all about the rezoning of the property at 130 Pine Street. And I just wanted to summarize that and clarify a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to clarify and really underscore is that we support Bombix's mission. We want them to succeed. We know from exchanges of emails and letters to the council today that many, you know, many of us in the community really feel the same way. But at the same time, tonight, we, along with a number of other neighbors, are requesting that the city delay voting on the rezoning just to allow time for Bombix and us, the neighbors, and the city to actually gather the data needed to assess and address the impact of Bombix's programming on us. Those include issues of noise, hours and frequency of programming, parking, traffic, you know, alcohol, licensing, all of the things sort of related to Bombix's current and future plans. As their neighbors, we have been and are impacted by. And secondly, because there are additional potential uses of the property, right, that would be allowed under office industrial zoning, should the property change hands within the 30-year period in which the development agreement between the city and the church will be in effect. And I won't go over all the lists of uses under OI because I know you know them, but there are many. And so given that 30-year horizon and the possibility that ownership of the property could change, we're really asking for some additional time to incorporate, identify and incorporate any reasonable guardrails for the property's usage situated as it is in a predominantly residential neighborhood. And so given that context, it may be that there are additional restrictions besides the historic preservation restriction that could make sense to put into the development agreement. And we understand that others might be better addressed through licensing, et cetera. We just, we don't want to be in the position of having to file complaints with the city. And I wanted to also again be 100% clear that our goal is in no way to close Bombix down. And in fact, we've really reached out to and met with Cassandra and Kyle. I see Kyle's here tonight.
That's two minutes if you can finish your thought, yep.
Yep, so just asking for a delay so that we can all be good neighbors to each other and think about the long-term context as well as the immediate one. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay, next up is Amy Kaling. Welcoming.
So much, thank you. My name is Amy Kaling. I live in Florence and I'm the Executive Director of the Downtown Northampton Association. I'm speaking tonight in support of Order 22.150, which was submitted on the recommendation of the mayor, which is seeking to waive the ordinance prohibiting food trucks in the Central Business District for a nine-hour period on Saturday, September 10th. It's specifically to allow brick-and-mortar restaurants located within Northampton who also own food trucks to utilize those trucks as part of a revived taste of Northampton that's being put on jointly by the city and the Downtown Northampton Association. And I just wanted to raise three points, if I get through them in time, in support of the order. The first is, while we have a budget for this event, it's not unlimited. So allowing those brick-and-mortar restaurants that have food trucks to use those trucks will save us some tent and equipment rental. We are providing tents and equipment for any restaurants who need it. The second is that I've raised this with a large portion of our restaurant community and I've only had one or two restaurants push back. And their concern was more out of creating an equal cooking playing field during that event and making sure that it was limited to just brick-and-mortar restaurants. And I think the language in the ordinance is written makes that very clear. And then third is just to highlight that the number of food trucks in question is actually very small. I think depending on the definition of food truck, it's a total of four, maybe a couple of others that I don't know about. And out of those four, only two have said that they actually want to use their truck. For one of them, it's the only way that they'll be able to participate. So for all of these reasons, I just would respectfully ask the city to support this waiver for the temporary 10-hour period when it comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And Amy, I think your audio was cutting in and out just a little bit there. But I think we heard, we got your message. Next up is Heather. Welcome, Heather.
Hi there, thank you for having me and letting me have the opportunity to speak. I am really following up in Carrie's footsteps. I also have been part of the group that's been meeting with Bombix. I live right across the street from Carrie, which is also pretty much across the street from Bombix. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, as neighbors, we are super excited, really, to have Bombix, you know, here in Florence and as neighbors. And, you know, I really like the mission. I'm excited about, you were mentioning food trucks, you know, the idea that they might have a kitchen that will be, you know, a community kitchen available, it's just really exciting. And this is, you know, right, I've actually, my program co-hosted an event there already. So we're really excited about it. But we also do want to just, you know, have time to, you know, it wasn't like there was any notice sent out to neighbors about any of the changes. I know it's not required, but at the same time, it didn't really give us a lot of time to, you know, think about and talk about the impacts and talk with other neighbors and, you know, you know, and really to come to some, you know, common ground and common resolution for things. Like Carrie said, we don't want to be in the position where, you know, things, there's a noise level that just feels like, or that things go too late. That we don't want to be calling, you know, anyone on that. We want to be able to have a good, direct relationship, which is, I think, what we're building. And in one of our community meetings, we actually heard from Bombix that delaying this till August really isn't going to impact their business model and that they too could benefit by having some time, you know, to continue to discuss with us. So I, I'm, I know there's another letter that has gotten a lot of traction in our neighborhood and I think there's even been some sense that it's like not in my backyard. And I really want to stress that that is not the case.
Thank you, Heather. Okay. I am not seeing any more hands. So last call for public comment. Okay, we will move on. I actually skipped something on the agenda. We have an announcement of a public hearing. Announcement of a public hearing on Item 22.094, National Grid Poll Petition to Install Five Polls and Remove Seven Polls on River Road. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, August 18th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. That's our next council meeting. On National Grid's petition to install five utility poles and remove seven poles on River Road. Instructions for accessing the hearing may be found on the August 18th, 2022 City Council Agenda to be posted on www.northamptonma.gov. No later than 48 hours prior to the meeting, the City Council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. Okay, next up is announcements. And at this point, I would just like to, before we get to announcements, just to ask for a moment of silence for the young person who lost, was murdered recently here in Northampton. It was very tragic and it, and a, it's a wound for our community. And just take a moment to recognize that. Thank you. Okay, now we're on to announcements from councillors and the mayor. It's kind of a free-for-all here, if the mayor wants to hop in or any councillors. Councillor Maori.
I just feel compelled to share, to commend our Health and Human Services and share a letter I got from one of my constituents. It's brief, it just says this, "I'm not sure if the Vaccine Clinic for Young Kids at the Elks is being run by the town, but I went today for my almost two- and four-year-old. I just want to say how phenomenal it is run and being adapted for kids. To not have to wait at all and have an outdoor area to go to after to run around and the fact that it was opening day is amazing. If you know who is running it, could you please pass on my gratitude? Someone was really thinking about young kids when they designed this. Thanks for the time and service to the people of Northampton." So yes, commending the Health and Human Services for their excellent job. That was my personal experience with my children as well. So I'm very proud of what we're doing here in Northampton, especially with kids.
Thank you for sharing that, councillor. Anybody else? Councillor Gore.
Today I got the opportunity to go to the ribbon-cutting ceremony for North Commons, which is here in Village Hill in Ward Two. It's 33 affordable housing units, it's a beautiful building. I would encourage anybody to come look at it. Councillor Foster was there, the mayor was there, Carolyn Mish was there. It was, it was a great event and it's a great building and it's a huge asset to this community that has affordable housing in it.
Thank you, councillor Gore. Right, anybody else?
Me, councillor Nash.
Councillor Foster, and I think I saw councillor Perry, too.
Sorry, councillor Perry, I saw you looking. And I just wanted to second what councillor Gore said. I was also, it's just a really wonderful event today and beautiful building and really great playground. So parents of young kids at North Commons at Village Hill, there's a new playground and it's just a really great place to be.
Thank you. Councillor Perry.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to say that summer is in full swing and that means the salsa in the park is back in Placid Park. The Northampton Arts Council is putting that on. Unfortunately, the first event got rained out, but that gives people time to plan for this weekend. On Saturday is their first event, there's going to be a live salsa band. And I also encourage people to check out Masonic Street Live. There's great programming there on Mondays and Fridays and Saturdays. So get out there and enjoy our lovely Northampton culture.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor La Barge. Councillor, I think you're muted.
Thank you.
There you go.
I just want to thank our fire chief, John Devine, for the monthly report that we've been receiving. I just can't tell you how valuable to have this information, especially from month to month. We just received the one in June also. And he talks about the incidents, the inspections, in which station is the busiest station naturally, which is downtown Northampton, and the mutual aid, the average response times. And he also talks about the training focus of his department. And I want to thank him for that because I feel that this information is very valuable for councillors and for the public.
Thank you, councillor.
You're welcome.
Right, any other announcements? I see Alan Wolf is here, I don't see the mayor. Alan, can we, or Director Nardi, is the mayor going to be joining us or?
She's going to meet.
Okay, great, she's taking a night off, I love it. You're shaking your head.
The mayor, the mayor is at school committee this evening, hiring a interim superintendent hopefully successfully. So the mayor regrets, so the mayor has sent Charlene and I to answer any and all questions that you may have about tonight's agenda.
Okay, terrific. And do you guys have any announcements that you'd like to make from the mayor's office?
I think actually councillor Perry said everything that I would have said from the economic development standpoint. So thank you councillor Perry for doing that. And I think we have stuff to say at various points in your agenda, but not any announcements right now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I noticed that, I think we have a few members of the public who are interested in the item under zoning ordinances, but I don't think Carolyn is here to speak just yet. So I would move that up, but she's not here. So if, you know what?
Councillor Nash, I could offer something from the mayor on that if we're talking about Bombix.
We, go right ahead. So then let's, let's go to that item, number 13, zoning ordinances. This is Item 22.110 and ordinance to rezone 130 Pine Street from URB to office industrial. This is in second reading and Chief of Staff.
Honestly, I'm fine to go after, honestly, I think councillor Jarrett has something to say. So I want to allow you all, can I follow councillor Jarrett?
Yes, you may.
All right, thank you. Uh, I just, just wondering, is, is, um, Carolyn Mish planning on joining us tonight for this? Because I think her, her input would be valuable.
I thought so. Let me text her.
If we're going too quickly and take, by taking her out of order like this, you know what?
That would be my, I mean, I don't mind doing it out of order. I just, um, would want her to be here if she's planning on it.
She definitely is planning to attend. May not have expected it to be taken up this early.
Okay, well, then, I, while we're waiting for information and, and Alan, please don't have Carolyn skipper dinner or something like that. So, uh, we will go back to the agenda as it's laid out. Uh, next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains item A, minutes of June second, twenty-twenty-two. It has items, item twenty-two point one-three-two, in order to appropriate F Y twenty-twenty-three cash capital funds to various capital projects. It has an, twen- item twenty-two point one-three-seven, an application for second-hand dealer license for kid stuff. This is a renewal of a license. Uh, item twenty-two point one-four-two, appointment of Kim Park as Senior Services Director. This is for referral to community services. Item twenty-two point one-four-four, appointments to various committees. These are also for referral to city services. We have Dylan Gaffney for the Historical Commission, Jeffrey Dawson for Parks and Recreation, Shanna White for the Planning Board, Elizabeth Silver for Zoning Board of Appeals. And that is the consent agenda. Is there, uh, I guess, first a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Move approval if there are no removals. Second.
Any requests for removals? I should have done that first. Seeing no requests for removals and that this has been a motion by councillor Foster and seconded by, was it councillor Elkins? Yep. Hearing, okay, no removals. Uh, Laura, roll call, please.
Councillor Elkins, yes. Councillor Foster, yes. Councillor Gore, yes. Councillor Jarrett, yes. Councillor Levarge, yes. Councillor Mayori, yes. Councillor Molton, yes. Councillor Nash, yes. And councillor Perry, yes.
Okay. We just got rid of half the agenda. All right, all right, about third, actually. All right, now we're up to financial orders. These are on first reading. Uh, we, these items, we will be discussing whether or not to send them to the, the consent agenda for next time or to, um, to send them off to committee. This first item, um, this is up for, um, uh, the request is for this to get approved tonight in second reading. Item twenty-two point one-one-four-five, an order for F Y twenty-two, F Y twenty-twenty-two year-end budget transfers. This is in first reading. Laura, can you pull that up?
I can.
And, um, Director Nardi is here and, um, I think you can describe what it is we have here.
So, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. What we have in front of us is the year-end order. With, it's a common occurrence at the year-end where we look at all of the budget lines and when we have deficits, we make transfers to cover those deficits. So, I've tried to outline them with where the deficit is, which is the, uh, number you will see in the positives. So, the transfer to column is the, is the one that is in deficit. The transfer from is where I, I am requesting that you take the money from to cover the des- deficit. So, it, it might seem counterintuitive when you see the negative. That's where we're taking the money from, um, and the transfer to is the deficit that exists today. So, first up is the City Council, um, and as you know, PM Powers has been working and that money has been coming out of your overtime budget. There was not enough to cover that, so I am requesting that you move, the three thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents out of your travel line to cover that deficit in your P S line, which is your personnel services or your salary lines. The next grouping is the mayor. There, uh, our salary line, um, is off by four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents and I'm requesting again that you take that from the mayor's travel line. The next one is the Center Services, the electricity line. As you're well aware, um, electricity prices skyrocketed, um, back in the fall. Um, we did not budget or anticipate that. So, we have a deficit there. Um, and I will go down further and explain where that money is coming from. Parks and Rec, we talked about this back in April as well. If you actually go back and look at the budget book and look under Parks and Rec, every year we budget, um, usually about three salaries, about fifty-seven thousand or fifty-four thousand dollars worth of salaries comes out of their revolving fund. And as we talked about in April, when we made the transfer before, we transferred about twenty-seven thousand. We really want to give them a chance to re- rebuild their reserves. After COVID, um, a lot of their reserves in their revolving fund have dropped. So, I am not taking that from their revolving fund one more time this year to give them the chance to build up those reserves. So, they have the deficit, but I'm not taking it from the revolving fund. I'm going to take it from a line I'll, I'll outline a little further down. The interest on municipal debt, um, we had a refinancing back in February, um, where the mayor spoke to you about that. And this was, um, an unusual one where, um, we ended up being short in, 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 in the interest line, which hasn't happened in the past, but we had, um, a savings, a huge savings in the principal line. So, I'm taking the fifty-seven thousand dollars out of the principal, which was our savings, and I'm just putting it in the, uh, interest line. Then the workers' comp insurance, um, it, it's just a, um, it was interesting. That, that line is budgeted based on, um, an estimate and then it really comes out, um, based on our workers' comp audit and how many personnel we have. So, actually, um, one line was over two, two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and workers' comp for the city was under two thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. So, we were very close in budgeting. We just kind of didn't have the allocation exactly correct, so I'm using the money there. The O P E V liability trust fund. There is, actually, let me drop down one, the medical insurance. That is where we have, um, uh, excess funds because of all the vacancies the city had. So, I am using that money to cover the Parks and Rec and the Central Services Electrical. And then I'm also, um, it has been the city's policy, if there is an excess in that line, to fund the O P E V liability trust fund. What the O P E V liability trust fund is the future liability of medical insurance and possibly life insurance for our retirees. So, we budgeted for medical insurance. We have an excess. So, it has been past practice to use that excess to fund the future liability called O P E V. O P E V is, actually stands for, um, uh, other post-employment benefits for those, um, who are new on the council. Um, and then if we go down, it has also been past practice and part of our policy that if, um, there is a surplus in the sick leave buyback, which is, which is actually how it's labeled in munis and, and it should be, um, uncompensated absences, again, shouldn't be uncompensated absences. It's actually for, um, vacation and sick leave. When somebody retires, we budget it for that. So, if somebody retires after a long time, they may have accumulated vacation that they have earned, but have not taken. Excuse me. The compensated absence is the same type of fund, used for the same reasons, but it's a trust fund. Uh, so when we have an excess in the budget, we actually move it into the trust fund. So, when we have multiple people who work for the city for, um, several years, they may earn a lot of sick time that needs to be paid out, although there are caps nowadays on that. But they also may have, uh, vacation time that needs to be paid out. So, we actually build up that reserve with that leftover as well.
Thank you. And you're requesting two readings on this so you can close out, uh, the, uh, F Y twenty-twenty-two fiscal year, correct?
Yes, um, thank you for pointing that. I should have explained that. So, when the, when the fiscal year ends, as of June thirtieth, the auditor and the city actually has up to July fifteenth to close the books. So, that gives us those two weeks to pull in any old invoices or, for the prior year, we get those paid and also to deal with any deficits, um, like this. So, by, we need to have that completed by July fifteenth, which is why, um, you graciously, uh, put this meeting together for July fourteenth. And yes, it needs to be done by tomorrow so that we can close the city books for on F Y twenty-twenty-two, please.
Okay. Councillor Levarge.
Yes, um, I have a question about how much sick time? Say, an employee works for the city and they've worked thirty-four, thirty-five years. How much sick time can they accumulate up until the time that they retire? And how much do they actually, do they get paid for that sick time once they retire? Or is there a fine limit where you would slice it in half of what they would get? Say they had over three hundred hours of sick time or four hundred hours and probably some have in the city. And so they go to retire, Chardine. How much do they get paid for the amount of sick time that they've accumulated?
Yes, um, so there is a cap now. There was not a cap. So, for employees who have worked, um, for the city for quite a few years, they may not have a cap on their sick time, but there is now. So, an employee could rack up, you know, a current employee, a more recent one, could be here a long time and not take any sick time, but there, there is a cap on it and I can look that up for you. And I think it also, it may be different for each of the unions. I honestly cannot speak to that, but I can get you all of that information. So, for the very long-term employees, they may not be under that cap, but I know the city realized that, that exactly, I think, what you're trying to point out, that could be problematic.
Yes.
So, um, for people hired, and I can get you that date, um, I would say it probably was fixed in the last five, six, maybe even ten years. So that there is a cap and therefore, you know, you, while it's wonderful that our employees don't take sick time, they cannot be paid out those hundreds of hours.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, councillor Jarrett.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Director Nardi. I just wanted to appreciate that we are able to fund the O P E V, from our savings on insurance. I, I see this as a, a huge future liability. I'm glad we are being proactive, uh, and, and toward funding this.
Thank you.
Councillor Molton.
Uh, thank you. I agree with councillor Jarrett on that point. Question, uh, Director Nardi, is the, uh, amount being transferred from the, um, medical insurance benefits, the entire excess in that account?
No, the, there was seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars left in that account.
And, uh, you're comfortable with the, so that would be an additional, what, close to two hundred thousand that's, that remains in that account?
Yes, which will be closed out to the general fund and then will be going free cash, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Nardi on this order? So, there is a request to approve this in two readings. That would require that we suspend the rule to, send it to the consent agenda or to, uh, the Finance Committee for discussion?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Wait, it was all, everybody all at once. I think I heard, uh, councillor Molton first making the motion and, um, who wants to fight for the second?
I'm not going to fight for it.
I think I saw, did, did I hear councillor Elkins? She was in there.
I don't know.
No, was it councillor Mayori? Yeah, okay. Motion made by councillor Molton, seconded by councillor Mayori. I just watched the, the little screen moves around as people are talking, so, um, and that is to suspend the rules. Uh, any discussion on suspending the rule? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please, on suspending the rule.
Councillor Foster, yes. Councillor Gore, yes. Councillor Jarrett, yes. Councillor Levarge, yes. Councillor Mayori, yes. Councillor Molton, yes. Councillor Nash, yes. Councillor Perry, yes. And councillor Elkins, yes.
Okay, the rule has been suspended. We can now enter, I can now entertain a motion to approve this this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by councillor Levarge, seconded by councillor Jarrett. Any further discussion on approving twenty-two point one-four-five? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Councillor Gore, yes. Councillor Jarrett, yes. Councillor Levarge, yes. Councillor Mayori, yes. Councillor Molton, yes. Councillor Nash, yes. Councillor Perry, yes. Councillor Elkins, yes. And councillor Foster, yes.
Okay, that order has, an order for F Y twenty-twenty-two year-end budget transfers has been approved.
Thank you.
Next. You're welcome. Next up is item twenty-two point one-four-six, in order to appropriate funds for additional Smith Vocational Agricultural High School students. This is in first reading, um, ordered that the sum of thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars be raised and appropriated and added to the F Y twenty-twenty-three Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School budget for a total budget of ten million one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars due to, due to two additional tuition-paying students anticipated for the F Y twenty-twenty-three school year. Councilors, um, and I believe Director Nardi is here if we have any questions.
So, may I just speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, when I made the budget, I was under the understanding that there was four hundred and twenty-five paying tuition students for Smith Vocational and found out the night of your vote that there was two additional students. So, it was four hundred and twenty-seven, not four hundred and twenty-five. So, after speaking with, um, the business manager and the superintendent, they were kind enough to wait and for this additional appropriation. This does not cost the city any additional funds. The city is actually funding six hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars of this ten million dollars. Um, and then the rest of it is Chapter Seventy, um, Special Education and Tuition. So, I just wanted to make that clear. This is not an additional monetary appropriation that affects the city. It is tuition coming in from other communities. Your appropriating it allows them to actually use it during the year. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
Move to, move this to the consent agenda of our next meeting? Second.
Okay, a motion to put this on the consent agenda has been, uh, made by councillor Jarrett, seconded by councillor Molton. Any discussion on putting this on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Councillor Jarrett, yes. Councillor Levarge, yes. Councillor Mayori, yes. Councillor Molton, yes. Councillor Nash, yes. Councillor Perry, yes. Councillor Elkins, yes. Councillor Foster, yes. And councillor Gore, yes.
Great. That has been sent to the consent agenda. Next up, uh, twenty-two point one-four-seven, in order to authorize F Y twenty-twenty-three inter-municipal agreements. This is in first reading and it is a long, a long order and, um, but I, I also think it's an important order. Does, um, a long order and um, but I, I also think it's an important order. Um, does um, Director Nardi or Chief of Staff, do you want to speak to this or?
So yes, I just wanted, this is an annual order. Um, this order is um allowing this city or it, it's notifying um you and you authorizing the city to have agreements uh with other communities or organizations that fulfill um services and needs, not only of our city, but um of other communities. Um, as you can read through, uh, the departments that are involved are, um, we supply uh like building inspection services, um, weights and measures, electrical inspection to some of the smaller communities. Hearing officer, we also do that, um, and the city gets um payment for that. Um, so the, the Health and Human Services Department is also involved. If you can look through, mostly uh starting on um page two is um most of all of theirs. And then if you go down, we also, um, IT Services provides um micros- uh laserfish hosting services for a few small communities around us. Um, and then if you continue on, you can see the planning department is involved. Um, they also do a lot of intermunicipal work. Um, and I don't need to read them all to you, but I think this is all good work. Um, services that are needed. I think it's wonderful that the city collaborates, um, not only um gains services, but we also provide services as well. And I think that's very educational for not only uh us, but also for um the cities around us and our communities around us. And then the very last um page, page four and the most, the bottom half of that section is just a list of other intermunicipal agreements that you've already approved and are still in existence. Um, it's just for your information and also so we don't lose that information um when we go through every year because they're not always on the same rotating schedule.
Thank you, Director. Yeah, and you, you also saved me having to go reading the whole thing, but it is an impressive list and um it is the, the leadership that, and the partnering that our city does with other communities, um, is, it's really quite remarkable. It's, it's, so anyway, and this document very much demonstrates that. Uh, Counselor Jarrett, I saw your hand.
Great, thank you. Um, Director Nardi, do you have a sense of which items have changed since last year? Like what's new or what's been removed? I, I did notice, you know, the, that Westfield is entering the bike, Valley Bike Program, but are there others?
Um, so yes, there is actually the um, no, I should have highlighted that one. I think it's the Health Information Exchange Agreement is new. There was one new for the Health and Human Services, and I believe that is that one? No, I'm sorry, it's the Public Health Excellent Collaborative. One of those two is brand new um for this, and I apologize, I should have marked which one. Those are new, um.
I, I think the HIE was existing, so it's gotta be the other one.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So those, that's the only new one. The rest of them are all existing. And there were a few that were taken off that were not rea- are not being renewed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions about this order? Um, I will entertain a motion to either send this to consent agenda or to send it to finance.
I'd like to just make a motion to send this order to the consent agenda.
Second that.
Okay, uh, motion made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Perry. Uh, any discussion on sending this to the consent agenda? At our next meeting. Uh, hearing none. Uh, Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, uh, that item, uh, about concerning intermunicipal agreements has been sent to the consent agenda at our next meeting. Um, our li- our last financial order on first reading is item twenty-two point one four eight. An order authorizing changes to Public Health Nursing Revolving Fund. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half for fiscal year. Uh, Director Nardi, uh, perhaps you could be a little clearer than this?
Yes, so um, you have an ordinance or the city has an ordinance for revolving funds. And in that ordinance, as you can see, it dictates what the fund number is, what the purpose of the revolving fund is, who is allowed to expend the money, um, where the money will come from, what you can, again, um, it actually, a more detailed of what you can actually spend those funds on, and then if there are any restrictions and how long it runs. These are usually annually, you vote them as part of the budget, and you just did that in one of your motions back in June. Um, however, with the change of the Health Department from the Health Department to the Health and Human Services, um, we needed to update and make commission, and make the person allowed to expend, not the Director of Health, but the Commissioner of Health and Human Services. And then we also needed to update, um, the way this revolving fund works is it, in the past, it's been for, a lot of it has been for flu vaccinations. So with flu vaccinations, you go in, you get your flu vaccination, and then they apply for reimbursement from your insurance. Uh, when they get those reimbursements, those go into the revolving fund, and it helps keep the, the clinic moving and all the operations paid for. With, the reason this also came up is with COVID, none of us knew what to do or how things were gonna work, so we just started COVID in a separate account. And we didn't know whether we were gonna apply for FEMA, whether we're gonna get paid for it through CARES, or whether the city was gonna have to take on that cost when we started operating the, the clinic. Um, what happened is the same thing that happens with the flu clinic. We, Meredith and her team and everybody applied for the health reimburse, uh, excuse me, health insurance reimbursements, and that covered all the clinic costs. Um, so there's no cost to the city for that. As we come out of, or as we dangle outside of the COVID pandemic, um, we feel that it's safe now to move this whole operation right under the same process that we do for the flu clinic. So for any future COVID clinic, as we continue with the COVID clinics, they're just gonna be operated right out of the revolving fund. And that's why I've asked for the increase um for the expenditures. In the past, we've said the limit to expend is thirty thousand. Well, the COVID um clinic has shown us that the costs are much higher. Um, if it was to ramp up to its full uh capacity like we were back in January of twenty twenty-one, um, we were, we spent like two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand. Our hope is we will never have to be at that level again, but I need, uh, what I'm asking for is that authorization. So that if we get back to that point, which I hope we don't, um, Commissioner O'Leary has the ability to run her, her clinic as she needs to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for Director Nardi? Okay. Uh, this is a financial order in first reading. It can go to the consent agenda or it can go to the finance committee.
Move to, send to the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Uh, motion made by Counselor Maori to send this to the consent agenda, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, uh, in, in order authorizing changes to Public Health Nursing Revolving Fund will be on the consent agenda at our next meeting. Okay, that brings us up to financial orders in second reading. Um, we have order twenty-two point one five oh, an order temporarily suspending City of Northampton Ordinance two eighty-five dash four, permit to display merchandise on streets required, mobile food vehicles um on September tenth, twenty twenty-two, in support of the Taste of Northampton event. This is in first reading.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
I think you, you, there weren't any financial orders on second reading. I think you um just saw orders and jumped ahead, which is totally fine, but I noticed.
Oh, this is just, this is just.
Yes, and you were thinking about doing the zoning out of order, um, and I think I, I saw Carolyn come in, so I wanted to jump in for a second.
Okay, um. Well. All right, let's, let's hop to, remind me to go back to that. Let's go to uh, uh zoning ordinances. Um, Carolyn is here, where is she? Carolyn? Oh, so. Welcome. Okay, um, so, uh, we're up to. Let me hold it right one up here. Item twenty-two point one one oh, an ordinance to rezone one thirty Pine Street from URB to Office Industrial. This is in second reading. It's been to the Planning Board. It's been, um, and, and Planning Board held a public hearing. Uh, it has a positive recommendation from the Planning Board that uh BOMBICS meet with the butters to discuss operating conditions and restrictions. Uh, it is a positive recommendation from Community Resources. Uh, it's been the Legislative Matters, uh, where also, uh, there was a public hearing. Uh, and it is back here with a positive recommendation from Legislative Matters. And that I suspect that. It, Carolyn, is there any news that you would like to report on um this, this item here as we consider it?
Sure, so um, um, I described this when it was first introduced on first reading um for this parcel on one, on Pine Street. It's just one parcel for a zoning map change. Um, after it came with a positive recommendation from Planning Board, it went to Legislative Matters just this week. And the uh details of the historic preservation restriction, as well as a development agreement, had not been um um hammered out as of Monday night. Um, I had, um, um, and so there was a concern from the Legislative Matters Committee that they hadn't seen the language and that maybe um because of that, that um it might not be appropriate to vote on it tonight. Um, I did have a meeting with the BOMBICS folks on Tuesday, and um we talked about the language and um the development agreement in its draft form that you all saw from um way back when this was introduced. And we talked more about the, the specific details within the historic preservation restriction, which is part of that development agreement. And they were very interested in moving this quickly, um, because without this, they're not in compliance with zoning. And so that, if, if council had to delay a vote tonight, um, it would go, um, that would mean it wouldn't go to, until your August eighteenth meeting, I believe. And so that um extends the timeframe by which they could conduct um many of their um shows and, and other productions there. So um, they have since, just today, I got a signed document, two documents from them, but there are two other pieces that I want to relay to the council. And one is, of course, that you all haven't seen the finalized document. And there was no way to do that with the forty-eight hours notice for all city councilors to review it. Um, the other piece is that in order for the city to accept a historic preservation restriction, that component, um, the city council, um, eh, um, would, the normal course is to, um, for city council to accept the historic preservation through an order, council order, and of course, that hasn't come before you either. So that's sort of the third document that would be part of your, um, that's part of the whole package that you would want to vote on in order to accept a preservation restriction as a second sort of legislative action. Um, and I know that coming, and it, um, I won't speak for the councilors who are all here who are on Legislative Matters, but there was quite a bit of discussion there about wanting to take a little bit more time to understand the development agreement.
Thank you, Carol.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other thing, that part of the understanding that development agreement was also understanding the ramifications of the other pieces of um enforcement for elements that have been um more contentious in the neighborhood. So um issues surrounding noise and parking, which could be addressed through um the licensing process, either through the License Commission or an entertainment license. And there was an interest on the part of the councilors to understand that piece of it and whether it was appropriate to um, uh, rely on that path for um addressing the issues that um the neighbor, some of the neighborhood residents have raised.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Um, I see Alan Wolf has his hand raised.
And, and so I will, I will thank interim Planning and Sustainability Director Carolyn Mish for that excellent summary and share that um I am speaking on behalf of uh city solicitor Seawald, who advised the mayor that he believed there was um a little more time needed to work through all of the processes that um Director Mish just outlined, um, that it felt like things were moving just a little too quickly and that there were some Ts that needed to be crossed and some Is that needed to be dotted. Um, so admitting my inexperience on all of the particulars, I just want to communicate that that was the recommendation of the city solicitor to the mayor with which she concerned, concurred this morning. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Okay, councilors. Counselor Maori.
Yeah, just a few thoughts. Um, first of all, you know, the community resource, uh, I'm on community resources, and that positive recommendation was kind of contingent on the development agreement being, you know, finalized. And I just wanted to um um, put out there that I, you know, Counselor Garrett and I have met with residents and BOMBICS, and I wasn't at Legislative Matters, but I have found both, both parties to be very thoughtful. I was very impressed with Cassandra and Kyle's responsiveness. And also with the residents, at least that I was, were there when I met uh with them, who really were very positive about BOMBICS. I, I'm a big fan of BOMBICS and I, I love that space and the sound. Uh, so I just don't, I just want to name this because I think we can get into a kind of pro or anti thing. And I don't actually think that's really necessary here. I think that there, we all just really want a path forward because as residents have said, you know, this is something that could be in place for thirty years. And so I think it, it's worth taking the time. And also, I understand um BOMBICS, you know, desire to move forward and perhaps special, there's a special meaning we could be had. I mean, to me, it's all, the timing is really about having community understanding and agreements and development agreements in place. Um, and so if that, if that happens faster, you know, perhaps we can consider other options. But I just want us to think outside the, the kind of, this, the, the, the kind of back and forth of anti and pro because from where I, you know, I've been, um, that actually hasn't been the tone at all.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Moulton, and then Counselor Jarrett.
Uh, I'll, I'll, uh, I'd like to have Counselor Jarrett go first. Since he chairs Legislative Matters.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, coming out of Legislative Matters, um, I, I felt that I did, you know, want that, felt that, that, that we, that we understood that the, the, the issues that um Carolyn Mish outlined, um, although, although the issue of the order to accept the historic preservation restriction is a new one, but that, that. But that, that having the development agreement, us able to see that. And to, and have time to review that before we, we vote. So speaking as, you know, the councillor for Ward Five, which is, Bombix is in Ward Five. You know, I, I very much support Bombix's mission. I support the historic preservation of the church and the continued use of the church and synagogue and preschool, that, all of that, that will continue with Bombix. And I understand the desire to delay, to give more time for neighbors to engage with this change. But I also understand Bombix's needs for income and that this zoning change will assist them greatly. And so. I think it could be appropriate to have a special meeting so that we could vote sooner than August eighteenth. But I would want that time so that we can get these, these documents in order so that we can understand. The scope of the entertainment license, the scope of its power in, in regulating noise and, and other neighborhood concerns. And, and I, I hope that in this time, that conversations between neighbors and Bombix can continue and that. An informal agreement be reached, I know ideally this, the informal community agreement would be in place before we vote. So, yeah, I just want to thank everyone who's been involved. And I've had many conversations with folks from Bombix and with neighbors and. Ready to continue that until we are ready to vote. Yeah, I'll stop there.
Thank you, councillor Jarrett. Councillor Moulton.
Thank you, I, I concur with both councillors Mayori and, and Jarrett. I spoke Monday at Legislative Matters strongly in favor of the, both the mission of Bombix and the rezoning. And I concur with the suggestion that we have a special meeting. I think waiting five weeks is too long. But I do think for the reasons that have been stated, that having a little more time to review these documents and understanding the. The licensing component of this would be, would be helpful. And, and I, I also think that discussions between neighbors, the immediate neighbors and Bombix have been, have been fruitful. And I hope that continues, so I, yes, I would like to have a special meeting sometime, maybe two weeks or.
Councillor Elkins.
I, two things, one, I, I can't wait to vote for this when it is the appropriate time to do that. I'm very excited about Bombix's project. I also want to commend everyone for the hard work that they did to, to progress what they were able to even since from Monday to this point. I, I know that was all in an effort and out of, you know, the very real realities of what it means to be operating for the summer and how long it was, you know, potentially going to, to take. That being said, I would happily come back for a, a special meeting to approve this after we've had time to get these things in order. Just as a procedural matter, I guess my question would be, would, 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 would this be a motion to table this until future meeting or?
I haven't heard a motion yet, but it seems that idea is being discussed.
I mean, I don't want to cut off anybody's discussion, but, and I suppose we could discuss the issue, the motion more, but I would move that we table this. For a future meeting, special meeting. At some, prior, prior to our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, so that motion was made by councillor Elkins and seconded by, who was it? Councillor Mayori, thank you. So the motion is to. Is to continue this at a special meeting at a point to be, be determined. Prior to our next council meeting, which I think is on the eighteenth of August. So. Councillor Mayori.
Yeah. Yeah, should we discuss it? Right, we can discuss it.
Yeah, we have a motion, go ahead, go.
Right, we have the motion, okay. So I, my only concern is, you know, I don't want to be in the same place where nothing is moved and we're back. So I, I guess I don't know how we'll know, yeah, when to have the special meeting. Because for me, it's really contingent upon these items of like the community understanding and the agreement, the development agreement. So, I mean, perhaps we can, you know, just check in about it. But I just wanted to put that out there that I don't want to get, I don't want to have a meeting if all the, if all the items stay the same, you know. But I would like to, you know, have it as soon as possible because I understand what, I really do understand what Bombix is up against. So how, I guess I'm putting out to the council how we will know when to have the special meeting. Suppose we could schedule it and see where we're at and if we get the time, we could always move it.
Thank you, councillor Elkins.
Um, what is the timeline, Carolyn, what is the timeline for the, sort of that second legislative piece?
In not much time at all, it really just has to be into. The clerk Laura Krutzler's office, you, you know, more, slightly more than forty-eight hours ahead, so it can be posted. And that's not, I mean, we've done lots of these orders for historic preservation restrictions, so it's not a heavy lift at all to get that turned around.
Okay. So councillor Mayori.
So then, then we could reasonably expect by July twenty-eighth, Thursday, July twenty-eighth, we could have a special meeting, sounds like. But I'm open to other dates. That's two weeks from tonight.
Yes, and so, it, so we, my thought on this is, as the council president, that what I, what we could do is. It's, it seems that the preference is to have, have this discussion again at another meeting where we have all of the, the information and document. Documentation as outlined by attorney Seawald and by Carolyn, that we have a chance to look over the agreement. And also, and so I, I'm happy to set that meeting up. When all of that information comes together. I, I also want to make sure, Carolyn, that Planning Board asked that the, that Bombix meet with neighbors. Has that, has that occurred? It sounded, there's been meetings, but I, has that criteria been met?
Well, I, I wouldn't, it wasn't part of the motion to approve. I think it was sort of as a side conversation, they encouraged the parties to continue to talk. And as far as I know, that has happened, I mean, they met June ninth, so it's been over a month. And I think there has been discourse, but I don't, I haven't been part of that, so I don't want to interject, you know, a number or, you know, what came out of those discussions. But I do know, I, I believe that has happened.
Okay, councillor Jarrett.
Yeah, I was present at a, a meeting between neighbors and, and some neighbors and Bombix. And I know there's ongoing conversation as well about an agreement.
Okay. So, all right, so I, my, so it sounds like the preference is to have a special meeting on this sometime, possibly in two weeks, but before our next council meeting. And when we have time to view documents that, that, that we, that all of the, everything's been filed properly. And also I'm hoping that the, the dialogue between neighbors and Bombix can continue and prior to that meeting. So. That's what we'll do. I don't think we need to vote on this.
There, there is a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
There is a motion, okay. All right, let's mo, let's vote on that motion then.
Councillor Moulton.
This is a motion to table, correct?
It is. A motion to, to, to hold a special meeting in, in, in a few weeks before our next council meeting.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Perry.
Yes.
Councillor Elkins.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Gore.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
And councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Where did we go in the agenda here? Okay, so I will be announcing a special meeting when we have all of our information. And probably within the next two to three weeks. Okay. Let's see. All right. Oh, so we moved up on the, all right, so let's go back, how's everybody doing? Do people need a break?
Yes, could we have a break, please?
Yeah, let's do a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody back at eight seventeen. Thank you. Something around had me losing where I was, all right. I now know again. For the moment. All right, let's see, we're back to orders. And I, as I was looking at it, didn't we talk about that? We almost talked about it, but in my mind. So, okay, we are up to orders, we're up to item twenty-two point one five zero. An order temporarily suspending city of Northampton organ, ordinance two eight five dash four. Permit to display merchandise on streets required. Mobile food vehicles on September tenth, twenty twenty-two, in support of the Taste of Northampton event. I believe that the Chief of Staff is here to speak to this. And Alan, you want to tell us what, what this is about?
Oh, my gosh, I am so excited to tell you that, what this is about. So this, and then I'm putting my economic development hat on, but this idea came and I, and I know Amy is still here, so I want to completely embrace her as part of the conceptual team with this. So Amy and Annie Lesko and I were trying to figure out what projects to put forward to a grant process that just cropped up thanks to the pandemic and the ARPA funds that the state has been trying to figure out how to spend. But this one came out of nowhere, it was called the Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program. And we did two rounds and did a total of seven different projects, we tried to get them to fund. And one of which was the, to restore the Taste of Northampton to the city of Northampton. And the recognition that in almost every economic development meeting I've ever had with the chamber, with other groups, that people said, gee, I wish the Taste was still happening. There was, it was a magical time as we looked into the Northampton's past, that this was a fantastic event that we really wish was still happening. And there were even articles written about how the Tastes had died all over Western Mass. And, and so we thought, well, coming out of the pandemic, it might be a little difficult for our restaurants to project such an event. And I said, well, why don't we ask for the eighty-five thousand dollars and, and cater it like a way? it like a wedding? And in fact, pay the restaurants to do it. And we only got forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, but we are in fact going to do that. And the the City of Northampton is going to rent the tents, we're going to pay for the music, we're gonna close Main Street between Old South Street and uh and King and Pleasant with obviously Center and Gothic also being closed at the ends there um on September tenth and have a big uh event. The current plan is to put the stage out and have some salsa dancing, have a few bands, we have a tentative budget, it's all very exciting. But one of the things we realized is that some of the brick and mortar restaurants in the City of Northampton own food trucks and have been permitted by all of our city apparatus that permits food trucks, which would then save us money on tents, and I think Amy said this earlier, um so I'm probably repeating some of what she said, I was, I had a little computer trouble getting it. But the idea being for people like Bear Croissant, a local burger, Harrell's, um and one more, that they could just drive their truck up and have all the cooking apparatus they need and a sort of built-in tent. Um and so this order was in recognition that there are no food trucks allowed currently in the central business district. And so extending the or 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 I'm sorry, suspending the order for one day in the specific zone is what we're asking you dudes you to do tonight, so that on this event that these folks who want to, and then if any of them were to build a food truck and get it permitted between now and then, that they could as well. But the 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 important part here, um because this is a an important codicil, is restaurants in the City of Northampton with a brick and mortar location can be allowed to do this on this one day. So that's what we're asking of you all tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? I have one. Um Alan, so uh these are uh some of our brick and mortar restaurants that have these trucks. Are are we considering uh food trucks from anywhere else? Um and.
Not for this event and not at this time. They're, I'll just stop there, but thi- this is a City of Northampton restaurant event, the Taste of Northampton, and so only restaurants within Northampton are being, that's all we're asking you to exempt for this purpose.
Okay. Uh Counselor Foster.
Not so much a question, as as a comment that um Alan, you answered all of the questions I would have had, um and and I saw Amy's outreach to the restaurant community, um so I I think this sounds like a fantastic event.
Thank you, Counselor Foster. Thank you very much. Uh Counselor Perry.
All right, since we're out here not just asking questions, we're giving comments, I too want to throw my hat in the ring and say that this whole taste idea is super exciting to me. As someone who has worked in the service industry in downtown Northampton for most of my adult life, uh I still wax poetic about the days when I worked in the station and the Taste of Northampton was happening, um and I just want to commend both Alan and Amy for all the work that they're doing to try and revitalize our downtown. Um you know, I've said this before, but the pandemic really did hit our service industries and our entertainment industry hard, so I think this is a great way to get people out and get people moving, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Perry. Okay, uh Counselor Maori.
Yeah, thanks, Cap, I can't wait.
So the one thing I will say, I will just, I will just inject one little bit of possible pessimism. We we got this money incredibly late. We have twenty-ish restaurants signed up right now, we we had enough momentum that we felt like we were ready to go. There was a minute where we were thinking about trying to postpone it to um spring, but that would have required a special dispensation, this money is supposed to be spent before December thirty-first, but we are moving fast and Amy is busting it to try and make this happen. Um so I just want to inject just the slightest uh expectation that I am, I am confident we will succeed, but it's it's gonna be some hard work. So thank you, Amy, um for, and you should turn your camera on and and take a bow, because you're working incredibly hard to uh to make this happen. And on the city side, I have to thank all of our city departments that would regulate such a thing, or set it up, including police, fire, health, DPW, building, uh licensing, everybody that's gonna require to make this happen, everyone has said, yes, we're on board and we will do this. So it's gonna be a lot of work in a very short amount of time, way shorter than we would normally have for such a big event, uh but we're we're confident we can do it.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, um thank you, Alan, and especially Amy. Amy's done such a wonderful job here throughout the COVID nineteen. I think this is awesome, we're opening our doors, we're getting back to what we did way back. So many people kept asking, when are we ever going to be doing this again? It's happening, and Alan, thank you. Um are you outside, Alan, on a ship or something, because your hair is moving up and down?
I I have a fan on because it's super hot in my very old house, so it's blowing on me, I was dying of heat, so bear with me all, thank you so much. Can I say one other thing that actually Chief, Fire Chief Daven reminded me today that in the past, one of the signature uh accessories of the taste was a dunk tank, um where where people could uh pay money for charity to have a shot at dunking uh city luminaries in the water, so I hope all of you will consider if we do in fact do that, um sitting in such a tank and allowing the residents of Northampton to take a swing. So I don't know if that'll happen, but it's it's been brought up and and we're considering.
Cool.
Wow. If it's a tank of really good wine, maybe, uh huh. I don't know.
Well, that's that, that's another item to be discussed, I think.
I think so, too.
But Alan, I, yeah, I I just want to say, first of all, this is, this is our, the Chief of Staff of the Mayor's Office, who's who enthusiastically out there working with our business community, and um and the terrific advocate that we have, Amy here, um that um, you know, that this city is behind revitalizing our business community and and having exciting stuff happen downtown. And this is, this is another example of how um the the city is really stepping up to make that happen. I s- I know there's some people out there who say, you know, like, you know, the city doesn't do enough for our business community. This is proof that 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 is wrong, so um, so thank you, Alan, thank you, Amy. Okay, so we have an an order here, this is in first reading, so it being an order in first reading, any more discussion on this, it'll be up for approval at our next meeting. Okay, I think we'll move on then. Okay, item. See, I keep switching between paper and the, okay, I'm gonna use the paper. Item twenty-two, one two nine, in order to petition the General Court to further amend Chapter eighty-six for Chapel Street. This is in second reading. Um, where did it go over here? Carolyn, uh do people have any questions about this? We discussed this last time. Carolyn is here, if people want to a- ask any questions. So this. Carolyn, can you give us a refresher on this? Is she, is she still here?
Sure, um, so if you, so from the last meeting, um, I think uh Wayne Fiden described the issues around this parcel at on on Chapel Street that originally came out of the disposition of the State Hospital lands, um with an authorization for the for city or municipal use. And it it originally was um determined that whether there was an interest in putting a fire station there, and that never um panned out, so it's been many, many years, well, fifteen plus years, um with um no ac- activity, but we also have been working recently, uh trying to look at that parcel to um allow for affordable housing development, but it needs legislative um action to allow the parcel to be used for something other than municipal use. And so that's why um this um would be a petition to the General Court for that purpose.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Carolyn about this item? Any further discussion on this item? I will entertain a motion to approve this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor LaBarge, seconded by Counselor Moulton to approve. Uh twenty-two point one two nine, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge. Counselor LaBarge? I think you're muted.
Yes.
Okay, um Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Okay, in order to petition the General Court to further amend Chapter eighty-six for Chapel Street has passed, uh now we're up to eleven ordinances, we are up to item twenty-two point one three three, an order for special legislation relative to credible service of William Dwight. This is in second reading, and I am going to be recusing myself as I am related to Counselor Dwight by marriage uh by marriage, and that uh I am going to turn the uh the meeting over to Vice President Foster.
Thank you, President Nash. Uh so we had this, um, there you go, we'll, we had this introduced at our last meeting, um and I just wanted to check to see if sponsor Counselor Elkins um had any additional information that you wanted to share, um or, you know, additional before we we take this up for vote.
Um, the only thing I would add is I realized that there is a a little abandoned sad whereas with nothing behind it, uh so that's a Scrivener's error, so if we could remove that. Um I know at Legislative Matters, um there were not so much questions, but it or I said that if anybody had any further specific questions that they wanted to discuss tonight, um that I would be sure to uh to be ready. Um and and I and I certainly am, I um, I I realize that one thing that wasn't quite sort of clear about the way it was laid out in the in when I introduced it the first meeting, um in the first reading was um, one thing that I think is important to understand uh because uh Counselor, because uh, it's okay to still call him Counselor, I know once you're a judge, you're always judge, you know, you're always, but um, the um, that the the issue happened is that when he was re-elected uh and came back to City Council in in two thousand and twelve, that um the the city realized at that time, but not within ni- the ninety days that would have ensured him the benefits that they had not given him notice, he at that time, like in the fall of two thousand and twelve, said, I do want to take part in this, he he back, so when he has said in the past, and uh he said at Legislative Matters, I think he said at, no, he wasn't there, but at the first reading, when he was explaining this, he back in two thousand and twelve and thirteen, when they realized the oversight, he at that time opted in, bought in, and it was only later when this kind of fuzzy spot in the administration um for state employee um benefits, um, sort of a fuzzy uh unclear place that years later, a decade later, after he had actually bought in the, you know, paid in, um they clarified in a way that was uh adverse um to people who found themselves in that situation. So he he he, the difference of, for the difference of three months, basically, like four, well, I figured it out, four to six months, um that if he had had notice, if he had bought in within the ninety days of being sworn in in two thousand and twelve and and taken action at that point in time, um as opposed to four months later, he would not be in this position. So um it's a, I realize that 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 was not as clear as it could have been, so when I've said that this is a constituent issue, this was a a kind of a a a a a really, it's not a lapse of t- of ten years, or him coming back all these, you know, nearly twenty years later, it is a thing that happened back then, uh that it was only years later that he learned was not going to ensure that he had the benefits that he had, um the insurance, specifically the health insurance benefits. And I think also, uh Counselor Jarrett, that at the Legislative Matters, you'd asked it, you know, like what the precedent was for it, there is, um, there are a couple of um cases by the, by the P- Parac, the uh, the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, um kind of that that are what sort of triggered this um interpretation of the of the regulations and the policies that meant that Bill would not get the benefit of the benefits he'd gone back and paid for. Um and as far as this specific legislation, um that um we are, that I've put forward, um there is, there is an example uh back in twenty twenty of a firefighter in eastern part of the state, um who, for a kind of a similar oversight, where he had told them he was opting in to the retirement, but they did not process it correctly, and so they had to go back and um pass a special legislation. In that case, it did pass uh the legislature, um after some advocacy, uh Bill may be in a little bit tougher position, um because of certain things around cities' obligation to notify electeds of their benefits at the time and uh things like that, but um if if we think it's in line and appropriate um uh to do for somebody sort of caught in this situation, for public servants caught in this situation, uh then from there, it goes on to the next level for that level of advocacy. I feel like I said a lot of things that didn't really clarify as much as I'd hoped to, but I can unpack and explain if anybody has any other questions. This is why I'm not in ru- in human resources or uh benefits or a tax attorney, this is all of these things.
Uh are there, are there other questions, Counselors? Okay, uh so there's the Scrivener's error to remove that last hanging whereas clause. I was hoping it would be like Mad Libs, that we could all fill it in tonight, but um.
Yeah, whereas Bill Dwight is.
Yes. Uh so on that, then the next step would be um a motion uh for approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Counselor Moulton, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Laura, would you take a roll call, please?
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that motion passes eight, eight to nothing, and we can welcome back our colleague, President Nash.
Hi, everybody, I got a chance to finish my salad. All right, all right, we are up to zoning ordinances not yet referred. Uh so we have item twenty-two point one four one, in ordinance to amend the zoning map on Bridge Road and Cook Avenue, this is in first reading, and um, let's see, uh, upon the recommendation of Mayor Tino Luis Shera and planning and sustainability, an ordinance to amend the zoning map on Bridge Road and Cook Avenue, um and Carolyn is here, and this has to do with affordable housing, correct?
Yes, it does, um, so we have, as you, um, Counselors, just more recently, um approved an expansion of the forty, what's referred to as the forty-yard district at the State Hospital, um but forty R is a section of um the land use code at the state that is really an incentive um district that the state has created to encourage housing production. And um in particular, through that housing production, um the state wants to encourage affordable housing, and because of concerns about sort of increased housing. and because of concerns about sort of increased housing, um, and trying to accommodate the housing that we need to fill the gap in our, in our, um, inventory across the Commonwealth, the state also has a complimentary incentive program for payments based on, uh, first establishing the zoning, um, boundary or district, and then when, um, affordable housing units are built under that, um, within that zoning district, there are other additional incentive payments. And it's all, it's not, um, there's not a set rate that, um, there's a formula that's created at the state level for these payments. And also, it's based on how many other districts you have and how much the city has already, um, received in payments for that, um, type of zone. So in North Hampton, we established our first forty R district, um, to be located at the state hospital because we knew we were going to have affordable housing units there anyway. And so it made sense to go ahead and, um, adopt this, um, zoning that then would allow us to receive those payments from the state. We've expanded the state hospital overlay district, and we also created an urban residential zoning classification of forty R, and there's only, there's a small parcel on Bridge Street that, um, covers just the property that Valley CDC owns and manages, which is the, um, the, um, S, the, um, the microunit, um, housing project, and, yeah, I forget if it's ninety-six or eighty-six Bridge Street, but right next to the, right next to historic North Hampton, one property down. So we have a zoning district, which we're referring to the urban forty R district there. And so the proposal in front of you is to, um, essentially expand the district and cover the two parcels that we know are going to be providing of for, will result in affordable housing for North Hampton so that we can take advantage of these, um, incentive payments from the state. I will share my screen. I think you all have it, but just think for the public's sake to, um, to show the map, um, which I have here, and I can zoom in a little bit, um, just to describe, um, these two parcels, even though they're not touching, um, and this map in, that's in the actual ordinance doesn't really show the, um, whoops, I zoomed out too far. Sorry about that. Trying to just get it right. Sorry. Um, this doesn't show all the connections, but I'm going to go with my cursor and show you that um, part of the requirement to allow a zoning, um, forty R overlay is that it has to be within walkable or transit, um, transit connections to, um, an area of concentrated development, which means an area of concentrated commercial development essentially. So, um, these, both these parcels, this is Bridge Road, the corner of Hatfield and Bridge and Prospect, which is where the old nursing home is, and then Cook Avenue, which is the parcel that the city just purchased about a month ago, and, um, we are, um, um, currently actually just issuing, um, have issued an RFP for demolition of the old Moose Lodge there, um, so that we can prepare the site for affordable housing. But these two parcels are, um, within walking distance of the King Street corridor. And so all of these big parcels here represent the commercial development. So this is the big Y and Walmart Plaza here where my cursor is buzzing around. And then all the way down, if you can imagine, all the way down the King Street corridor, that then at this very southern end, closer to downtown, also connects that other urban residential forty R district. It's, um, the Valley CDC project on Bridge Street. So we have submitted this to the state, and if you recall from the last expansions of forty R, the state doesn't allow, um, it doesn't want the city to act on this, um, amendment until they have granted permissions for the city to do this because they're the ones that are going to be paying out the city, so it needs to fit their mold of, of requirements. Um, I had sent this several months ago to the Department of Housing and Community Development, which oversees this program, and, um, had also notified them that, um, while waiting for their evaluation and analysis, that I was going to go ahead and submit it to City Council, and the reason why I'm doing that is so that by the time DHCD catches up to this process, um, potentially, um, it'll all come together in time to allow Valley Community Development to submit their application to the Planning Board for a forty R permit. And their target is to submit their application, um, I think September or October. So it's really important to have this continue to move forward, and my hope actually was to say, hey, DHCD, we are moving forward. We've submitted this ordinance to our City Council. Are you close to a decision? So at any rate, I just, that's sort of, um, the background of where we are. So we, I wanted to start our public hearing process with the city. Um, this would be referred out to Planning Board and Legislative Matters in the very least, and wherever else you all wanted to, this to go. But those are the two entities that review land use regulatory changes. So, um, that's what these, um, that's what's in front of you.
Thank you, Carolyn. And, um, Counselors, um, Carolyn, uh, could you, could you stop sharing the document?
Yes, sorry about that.
That's fine. Now I can see everybody. Cool. Uh, Counselor Jarrett.
Uh, I could defer to Counselor Moulton since he is the counselor from Ward One, where these, uh, properties are, if, if he would like to go first.
Well, you guys are very polite tonight. Go right ahead.
We are good buddies. Uh, thank you, Counselor Jarrett. I, I, I just want to commend, uh, interim Director, uh, Mish for being forward-thinking on this. Uh, as, as Counselor Jarrett says, these are both in Ward One. Uh, we, we know that Valley CDC is, uh, planning to move by the fall on the permitting process for the old nursing home. So I, uh, I am, uh, completely in support of, uh, of this proposal.
Thank you, Counselor Moulton. Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. Yes, I'm also in support. Um, I wondered if there was any concern if DHCD would be concerned about, um, the wa- you know, if the, in terms of it being walking, walkable. Um, not so much for the prospect, uh, or sorry, the, yeah, the Bridge property, because that is, you know, I, you know, there are continuous sidewalks and crosswalks to get to Big Y um, and that plaza. But for the other one, um, there's no sidewalks along Cook Ave, uh, until Hatfield Street, and that's kind of a treacherous crossing with no crosswalks, um, across Hatfield Street. So is there any concern that, that that might be an issue, or, and that maybe is something we should address in order to, you know, and make, make this a more, uh, walkable, um, travel, you know, for, uh, yeah, more walkable.
Yeah, right. Um, so it might be an issue for the Cook Avenue parcel. Um, they have indicated to us previously that, um, um, I think when we were discussing the property out on Burt's Pet Road with them about the options of doing, um, forty, um, forty R, that, um, not having a sidewalk, you know, all the way along Burt's Pet Road was, was a problem. Um, so I, um, you know, when we, we pitched this a couple of months ago, they took an, an initial look at it and seemed to give it the, um, the nod that we could, that they wanted more information, and they gave us the specific information they wanted, so we've done that. So I guess I'll just say we'll wait and see about that parcel. And that's another reason frankly why they want to have granted permission for this before the City Council takes its final action.
Other thoughts, questions? Counselor Foster?
Um, I just, if I could add, I, I just, I know it's not going to go up Cook Avenue, um, to the end, but as part of the design work for the Hatfield, um, King Street intersection and the roundabout, there, um, was a plan to build sidewalk on Hatfield Street up to that intersection, which I think also included a crosswalk. I don't know what the latest plans are. So it at least, um, addresses the intersection, but certainly not that segment of Cook Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Foster.
I, I didn't want to cut off any discussion, um, but would be happy to move referral to Planning Board and Legislative Matters.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to refer to Planning Board and Legislative Matters made by Counselor Foster and seconded by Counselor Jarrett. Any thoughts on that motion? Counselor Jarrett.
Uh, just question for Carolyn. Um, do you have a sense of when this might, uh, come and whether, where it would be appropriate to do a joint public hearing?
That's too far in the future.
Okay.
No, uh, um, it's a good meaning. That's so next week.
Yeah.
Um, uh, yes, I think that that does make sense. Um, and because we're in the summer schedule, I think that's a complicated piece, right? So, um, um, uh, but I will definitely work with, um, Counselor, uh, with, with, um, you as well, um, uh, as well as the Planning Board to figure out if there's a date that works. Yeah, because I think that would make sense.
Great, thank you.
So is the hope to have these hearings of the hearing this summer, Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Foster, I saw your hand.
That, that question and answer just, I think, answered the question that I had was, would it be better to continue this to the August meeting for referrals, um, because of the, the timeline that it needs to go by, but if the hope is to have the hearing this summer, never mind.
Okay, so, uh, if we refer this to, uh, Planning Board and Legislative Matters, um, I would imagine that Carolyn and, uh, Counselor Jarrett would discuss whether or not a mutual meeting with the Planning Board might work, and, uh, and you guys will let us know when that hearing will be happening. Okay. All right, I'm good with that. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to refer this to Legislative Matters and the Planning Board for a public hearing. Hearing, no further discussion. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Okay, that is off to public hearing. All right, uh, now I, Laura, if I, we're up to resolutions, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay, uh, we have two resolutions before us tonight. We have, uh, uh, item twenty-two point one four three, a resolution in support of a federal assault weapons ban. This is in first reading. And this is, oh goodness, where did it go? This is sponsored by, uh, Counselor Foster and Counselor LaBarge. Is there anybody else? Let me see. No, that's it. I got it. So, uh, it, as, uh, my, uh, the, the way I do this, uh, I, I allow people who present their resolutions to read their resolutions into the, the record, so. Counselor Foster, Counselor LaBarge, you want to have at it?
We hadn't discussed a plan. Counselor LaBarge, would you like to read it, or would you like me to?
You can go ahead and now.
I could read it too. You could just say, no, I don't like that idea.
No, glad to. Okay. In the City Council, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, upon the recommendation of Counselor Karen Foster and Counselor Mary Ann LaBarge, a resolution in support of a federal assault weapons ban. Whereas the nineteen ninety-four federal assault weapons ban was allowed to expire in two thousand and four, and whereas scientific research demonstrates that unregulated access to guns results in a higher number of firearm fatalities, whereas twenty-five percent of firearm deaths in the United States each year are of children. And whereas people with a gun in their home are more than twice as likely to be killed by a gun than those who live in homes without guns, with disproportionately higher risks to women, who are far more likely to be victims of intimate partner violence when living in a household with a gun owner. And whereas research estimates, estimates that when the federal assault weapons ban was in effect, mass shootings were seventy, seventy percent less likely to occur. Whereas limiting access to assault weapons and high-capacity magazines has a demonstrable impact on reducing mass shootings, with states with limitations experiencing mass shootings at less than half the rate of states without restrictions. And whereas of all mass shooting incidents, which are defined as shootings involving more and more, four or more victims, between two thousand and nine and two thousand and eighteen, assault weapons accounted for seventy-six percent of non-fatal injuries. Whereas survivors, survivors of gun violence with non-fatal injuries and their families face life-altering outcomes, including an average increase of two thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars per month on medical spending in just the first year. A fifty-one percent increase in psychiatric disorders for survivors of gun violence. A twelve percent increase in psychiatric disorders for family members of survivors. An eighty-five percent increase in substance abuse disorders for survivors. Whereas on July fifth, twenty twenty-two, the American College of Physicians released a statement declaring that gun violence is a national epidemic that will require using all the tools one would employ for an epidemic in order to keep our patients and our communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of North Hampton calls on our federal government and representatives to reinstate a ban on assault weapons and restrict the size of magazines that can be purchased. And be it further resolved that the City Council of North Hampton supports a federal assault weapons ban as a necessary step, but only a first step in addressing the public health crisis that gun violence of all types presents in our country. And be it further resolved that the administrative assistant to the City Council shall send a copy of this resolution to Congressman James P. McGovern, Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator Edward Markey, President Joe Biden, Attorney General Merrick Garland, and Acting Director of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, Gary M. Restaino.
Perfect, Karen.
Thank you. So, uh, the sponsors have the floor. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, um, this is something that should have never, never happened, never happened, to allow the federal assault weapons ban to to just expire. Look what has happened in our country. Look at the children. The many, many innocent children that have been killed by these assault weapons. I was very honored to be a sponsor for this because it's in dire need. And if you really look at the research that's been done on this, it just didn't take a little bit of time. It took quite a bit of time to do the research and get the right facts. You know, David studied on homicide deaths among adults. You need to read that. It's very, very interesting. And you need to also read up on the federal assault weapons ban. When my family was here from Texas and left last Saturday, I'm going to be very honest with you. Both of my grandson and my little granddaughter were involved with a threat in high school of a shooting that might occur. And they had to do to save their lives, something that was so frightful that they talked to both me and my husband and my other son of how they felt of being so afraid. So I, I feel this is absolutely necessary. I don't want to see innocent mothers, which is absolutely true, when there is guns in a house and there is. When there is guns in a house and there is a violence in a house. There is an incident that occurs, that's not a good one. And you lose one of the spouses, or you have children that get hurt also. I am really honored, Karen, to support this. And it's something that I am hoping that we, even sending this. We can do more to make sure that it does happen and happens very soon. So I support it.
Uh, Counselor Foster.
I'll, I'll jump in as well. This, this, um. Came out of the work of the Northampton Democratic Committee that was, um, voting on a resolution. Part of the platform. And, um, you know, we offered to bring this to council as well, um, to, to elevate the platform. And got a lot of help, um, from Henry Rosenberg, who's a physician who shared, um, quite a bit of his research regarding. Gun control, um, Elizabeth Silver and Kathy Kay from the Democratic Committee. And Alan Wolf in his role, not as Chief of Staff, but in his role as a Northampton Democrat. Came across some language, um, and research to help put this forward. And I think that, that. You know, in, in the resolution, it does flip back and forth a touch between gun violence and assault weapons without a full distinguishing. But really the whereas clause, um, or the clause. Noting that an assault weapons ban would be a necessary first step, it, it's really just a first step. And there's, there's two numbers that, that I just think are so incredibly striking. That I almost have a hard time saying them out loud. But more than three hundred thousand children have been in school during a shooting.
Awful.
Three hundred thousand children. And when I think about the ripple effects of something like that, of three hundred thousand children. Their siblings who may not have been in that school, their parents, their extended family, their friends. The, the toll, the mental, that. I think we talk significantly about the toll of fatalities of gun violence. But I don't know if, how much we talk about the toll, the staggering toll of where that extends beyond. And the numbers. About seventy-five percent of non-fatal injuries during shootings are from assault weapons. What's really interesting is that only, I say only, but about twenty-five percent of fatal injuries are coming from assault weapons. And, um, I don't know the reason, I didn't put it in the resolution, the, that number because I. It needs more context and more explanation, but it had me wondering if it's the indiscriminate nature of the way assault weapons work. And of what those types of events are. And as well as the, the impact on the mental and physical and financial health of survivors and their families. It's, it's just absolutely shocking to me, like more shocking. And I, I think the toll is, is beyond what most of us. Really, really realize the way that the tentacles spread. Um, so it is so far beyond time, uh, for Congress to act on this, um, that. Very proud to bring this forward with Counselor Labarge, so thank you for cosponsoring.
Well, I'm gonna step in, and I just wanna say, I think the, the appropriate response is silence. I just, it's, it's staggering that, um, that. That we've unleashed this and we've allowed this, it, it's almost like an infection. That is, um, that, uh, that when you allow weapons of war to be. In, you know, with, people are allowed to have them. It, this is the kind of stuff that happens and that, um, that the, um. It, it's unconscionable that, um, that we've allowed weapons of war to be just, you know. Casually bought and, and, and it's just insane that. Um, you know, we, we don't extend this to other military devices. We don't extend it to grenades or missiles or, um, you know, cluster bombs, you know, that. There's all of these horrible weapons and, and we have enough sense to know, well, you know. Uh, you know, a person shouldn't be able to go into a store and buy these things. And that, um, and that, uh, it, it, it's, it's. It's, it's just absurd, so, um. So, yes, I, I, I will be, um, one hundred percent, um, voting yes on this. Counselor Mayori.
Yeah, I just wanted, it just brought up a memory that when I was, um, in public. Health grad school in the late nineties, I remember wanting to, to, um, study this for an internship. And we were not allowed, we were not allowed to really. Felt into gun violence as a public health crisis because of the, of the gun lobby was so powerful and is still so powerful. So this, so this is kind of new to see data because they've really fought against data being. Available, and this is why, and because it is so shocking. So thank you to, uh, both the co-sponsors.
Counselor Gore.
Yeah, I, I also wanna say thank you for bringing this forward to the co-sponsors. Um, I just remember working at a school and being trained in active shooting at a preschool and it's, it's just a shame that. That that's the kind of environment that young kids are growing up in now. And, um, yeah, that this expired in two thousand four is, that's a shame too. And all the statistics about survivors, I, I didn't know, those were really enlightening and.
I know.
I, I thank you for bringing them to the forefront and, and putting them in the resolution.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna add, add one other thing as, um, and, and. Uh, Counselor Gore mentioned this, that, you know, working with schools, the impact. That, um, you know, I, I've been going into schools for about twenty-five years now. And the change in the way that, um, that an outsider, you know, a consultant. Or, uh, or just anybody can get into a school, it's been dramatic. That, um, there was a time where you could just open the front door, walk in. Say hello to the people in the front office and say why you're there and they direct you where, where you needed to go. They wouldn't check your ID, they, there was no buzzers, there was no cameras. Um, and that, uh, the, the change. Uh, you know, in fact, I, the schools that I remember growing up in, you could walk in any door. You could leave any door, you could walk out any door. And that our schools today have a gauntlet that people need to go through. And where people are videotaped, they're checked in. And, um, and, and lastly, the absurdity of thinking that those folks in the front office. Those, those sweet people that are there just to be school, you know, administrators. And that they're the, the first line of defense and it, it's like, this is nuts. So, um, that, um, yeah, so I'll stop talking. But thanks for listening. Counselor Foster.
Just to, to carry on without belaboring that point that, that, um, Counselor Gore and Counselor Nash, she both made. Um, so my partner is a third grade teacher, and if we wanna talk about the pressures on teachers. Throughout the school year, she has a door that opens to the outside that she had opened during nice weather as much as possible for airflow. To prevent, to reduce this potential spread of COVID in her classroom. But then, of course, after the most recent shooting in Uvalde. She was again closing the door because we're talking about doors and we're talking about windows and locked. Entrances to schools and not the real problem. And so she was juggling. The spread of COVID indoors versus the potential, um, of a shooter. It's just, it is absurd and it's obscene that we're even having these conversations.
So this is a resolution in first reading and that, um. Uh, that it will be back on our next agenda and, um. That. I think it's time to move on to the next one. Okay. Next up, um, we have, what is the item number here? Let's see. Item twenty-two point one four nine, a resolution in support of overdose prevention services. Process note, suspension of the rules. And introduction and vote at the same meeting are respectfully requested as support of the pending state bill is time-sensitive. The resolution will not be as impactful if not adopted until the August meeting. This is a resolution, uh, upon the recommendation of Counselor Rachel Mayori and Counselor James Nash. And, uh, Counselor Mayori, would you like the pleasure of reading this, um, this resolution?
Sure, I'll give you a rest.
I'm happy to trade off too, so.
Oh, okay, yeah, you wanna do that? Why don't we do that? I like that. Keep me alert. So I'll, uh, I'll, how will you, okay, so I'll stop at this point. Uh, okay. In the City Council, July fourteenth, okay, we're. Resolution in support of overdose prevention services, whereas the COVID-nineteen pandemic has greatly exacerbated. And increased the challenges faced by those struggling with substance use. And whereas the continuing contamination of nearly all substances available on our streets. Fentanyl has significantly increased the lethal risks for and lethality faced by people who use drugs. And whereas last month, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health released moralizing statistics indicating that the overdose. Those deaths in Massachusetts increased by nine percent during twenty twenty-one, including forty-four deaths in Hampshire County. And. Whereas medical, public health and harm reduction experts worldwide, as well as organizations working locally in the field such as Hampshire Hope. Tapestry and the Hampshire County District Attorney's Office overwhelmingly agree that safe consumption services are a proven and effective tool. For assisting those engaging in drug use. Hand it over to you.
Okay, whereas State Representative Marjorie Decker and Dylan Fernandez have introduced. H twenty-eighty-eight, an act relative to preventing overdose deaths and increasing access to treatment. In the Massachusetts House of Representatives. And whereas H twenty-eighty-eight has been favorably reported out. By the Joint Committee on Mental Health Substance, Substance Use and Recovery. And whereas the service, services in support proposed in H twenty-eighty-eight. Would provide people using drugs with the critical means to avoid overdose death and injection-related infections. As well as significantly increased participation in treatment and other forms of care and. Whereas the Northampton City Council has consistently sought to support and promote the safety and health. Of all our community members, including those who use drugs. Establishing, establishing the first needle exchange program in Western Massachusetts over twenty years ago. Which resulted in a reduction of death, of deaths and HIV/AIDS transmission. And increased the utilization of treatment and. You wanna do this one, Rachel?
Okay, therefore, let it be resolved that the Northampton City Council commends the efforts of Representatives Decker and Fernandez. And recommends the H two twenty-eighty-eight be passed without delay. And back to you, Jim.
Be it further resolved that the administrative assistant to the City Council shall send a copy. Of this resolution to Governor Charles Baker, Attorney General Mara Healy, House Speaker Representative Ronaldo. Mariano, State Represent, State Senate President Karen Spilka. H twenty-eighty-eight bill sponsors, Representatives Marjorie Decker and Dylan Fernandez. Representative Lindsay Sabadosa and State Senator Joe Commerford. So, um, Rachel, you wanna lead off?
Uh, well, I'll lead off by thanking you, President Nash, for, for co-sponsoring and for all your insights. And I, you know, it was great talking. You, you have so much personal experience working in human services and kind of understanding the value of this. Right off the bat. And then we, I think we both had really great conversations this week where we, I learned a lot. So I also wanna thank Deputy Director Michelle Farre, uh, who's incredibly insightful and, and knowledgeable. Um, Jim Stewart of First Church Cambridge, Leslie Laurie, Cheryl Zoll and Amy Davis, Tapestry. But there, you know, help, support and their thoughtful insights on the subject. And basically, you know, it's really, uh, this is all about meeting drug users where they are at. And it's all about saving lives. And I, I'm very proud also, you know, to. Kind of, really what I was sensing was kind of ubiquitous support among so many entities. Because of, because this is something that's evidence-based, it, it works and it saves lives. It also, you know, it does increase treatment and reduces HIV and hepatitis infections. So, you know, it's also overwhelmingly safer not to inject and consume drugs alone. And either way, there's really no indication of any increase in crimes around these kinds of services or centers. And I think that, the, I think the resolution is really a great first step in helping us. Get back to this conversation that I think we, we were having a little bit before the pandemic and, you know, kind of acknowledging. That these, these facilities are effective and, and also just de-stigmatizing. This subject by talking about it. So that's why I really wanted to do this and support the state bill as well. And later on, you know, we'll have those thoughtful community conversations to lay specific fears that might arise in our communities or, you know, if, if. End up having services here, but, um. So I just wanted to also mention that it, right now, the, the state bill, which it would start a pi, ten-year pilot program. Um, what isn't, is in the Joint Committee on Healthcare Financing right now, so, but they are, are hoping to pass this session. You know, we don't, no one knows if Governor Baker will veto it. He may not, you know, who knows, you know, when you're on your way out, you might have different, uh, you know, different perspective, but. Um, but in any case, it's, I, I'm just really glad that this is coming, you know, to, to play on, on the state level. Um, it's a long overdue and I, I think that's all, yeah, I think I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Well, and, uh, I, I wanna thank Counselor Mayori for bringing this, uh, this resolution to my attention. Uh, it was first drafted off in, uh, this, we took a, a resolution from Cambridge and we adapted it to Northampton. Um, and, um, we started working on this on Monday and we started calling people. And as we called people to support for this, you know, from both the, you know, the DA, from the prevention community. From, you know, from all of the folks who are out there trying to, you know, help people, um, uh, that, that. This is, this is a, a step that we should be, uh, taking, um, that, um. That, you know, that leading, so. That um that, you know, that leading, so traditionally, when we um, we when we, we think of prevention as shaming somebody that, you know, don't do that, that's bad, just say no. And and the fact of the matter is that for for people who are struggling with uh with with addictions that that we need to direct services at them that have a have compassion and allow people to um to consider treatment and recovery, but at the same time, not to shame them and put them at further risk, that we need to start, you know, this approach of providing services that really do produce harm reduction. We've seen that with our needle exchange programs. We've seen that with um with with um the um, you know, with with methadone clinics, that there's, that by offering services and also de-stigmatizing the the services at the same time, that we can actually offer people routes to treatment and recovery. That um, you know, that, well, here, I I have a few quotes here. First, I want to, this is from a District Attorney Sullivan, he wrote this back in two thousand and eighteen. It was a, it was in the in the Gazette. Every time a person uses drugs alone, there is a chance that he or she will overdose and die. In addition to providing safer, a safer-using environment, supervised injection sites offer a pathway to to recover from addiction by by providing a bridge to treatment. These facilities offer the kind of human connection that might make a difference in helping a user pivot towards treatment. This, this is a quote from the American Medical Association from a press release back in two thousand and seventeen. Studies from other countries have shown that supervised injection facilities reduce the number of overdose deaths, reduce transmission rates of infectious disease, and increase the number of in of individuals initiating treatment for substance abuse disorders without increasing drug trafficking or crime in the areas where the facilities are located. And, you know, and I want to underline that that last line there about not increasing crime. So um, we have, so we have a needle exchange in Northampton. And as Counselor Maori and I were talking about, you know, this, oh, yeah, where is the needle exchange? We actually didn't know, okay? Well, I had, I knew it was downtown and and that we looked it up and we figured out what street it was on. I'm not going to say because I don't want to stigmatize it at all. But it's it's right in the middle of downtown and it's there. If you need it, you can look it up. And I've never heard a single complaint about it. I don't think any of the counselors have ever heard a complaint. We we have, we have a recovery center in town. It's great. It's got a sign out front. People go in and, you know, they can get advice, you know, there's, there's no crime going on around that. We we also had, much to my surprise, a few years ago, when I was talking with Counselor Jared about bus stops, I, he, you know, he shared with me, you know, news about the methadone clinic. And I was like, what? And, yeah, it's right in my ward. And yes, there's a methadone clinic. And I had no idea it was there because I'd never heard a single complaint about it. The, it's, it's, it's within walking distance of my house. And that um, that, you know, the the stigma that, you know, by providing these services, that you're going to invite more crime, it's just wrong. And that um, and that, so I, you know, these services are great neighbors and that um and that it's part of us leading with our compassion and and in in choosing harm reduction services. So I, you know, that's why I I so enthusiastically support, you know, was about hopping on with this resolution. So um.
Counselor Nash, I'd just add one more thing. I forgot, I I probably said it, but uh, when you're done, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. You know, I I just wanted to thank Lori Loizel for all her help. And was that it?
Right. And we thank Leslie Laurie too, right? Yes. Because you you spoke to Leslie Laurie, correct?
Yeah, and Leslie Laurie.
Yeah, she was amazing. Um, right. I was just going to add, I covered it in the the resolution. But the most chilling thing I heard was from Amy Davis, uh, from Tapestry, who runs the needle exchange programs, is that, you know, the big issue now with the fatalities is how contaminated these drugs are. So you have drug users who are very experienced and they're using the same amount they've always had. You know, they're they're trying, you know, they they have an awareness about how much, how much they could take and what they, you know. And the problem is, it's like playing Russian roulette because it's so dangerously contaminated. And that alone was just like, you need to have, if you have a medical person there, because the other problem with that kind of contamination is that the the Narcan that we all get handed up, it doesn't always work for that type of contamination. You actually need, you know, like, somebody who knows, like, a medical person to respond to that kind of complex overdose. So that was really, to me, a, you know, wake-up call about like how, you know, how much these these services and these centers can act as this kind of one-stop place for all that and keeping people safe.
I guess the the last thing I want to add is that I think we, you know, that um, in this, in the times we live in, I I think all of us get touched by overdose and overdose death. Um, I, you know, I've been touched by that. I, uh, friends from high, I had a friend from high school who OD'd. Um, I, that, um, I know, um, you know, that family, you know, friends in our community who've lost children. And that um, that this is, this is real, it's terrible. And um, and this is, this is one small step is to, you know, is to have a, these types of facilities. It's a, it's, it's, it's an enormous issue that we're dealing with. And this is just putting another tool in the toolbox, but so. Counselor Foster.
Yeah, thank you both for bringing this resolution forward. Um, the Gazette had done, it's a six months or a year ago, a really wonderful series um about the local impact of overdose deaths. And a couple of families really opened up with the reporters and shared their stories and very compelling. And I I think that, you know, as you, as you talked about, Counselor Nash, you know, putting the the human face on it. I think many of us have been touched by it and for community members who haven't been that understanding that that um people who are using are somebody's loved ones and they're individuals in their own right deserving of care and compassion and the best we can do for people who are in a very vulnerable place in their lives. So thank you for bringing this forward and I'm hopeful that it that it does move forward.
Thank you. Okay. Um, this is in first reading and will be up for discussion again next month for second reading.
No, she's asking for a suspension.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We want to suspend the rules. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Move to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Jared, seconded by Counselor LaBarge, uh, to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
And Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, we've suspended the rules. Uh, now I'll entertain a motion to pass this tonight.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Gore, seconded by Counselor Elkins. Any discussion? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, that passes and will be sent to those state representatives listed on the resolution. Thank you, everybody. Um, now we're up to interim procedure for conducting city council meetings. So I had uh Laura forward to all of you an email I got at about quarter of seven from Senator Comerford, letting everybody, letting us know that the, that the, both the Senate and the House have agreed and voted on basically keeping the same rules that we've been operating under. And that it's awaiting the signature of the governor. But it appears very likely that that the 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 situation that we were looking at, which was, we might have to return to in-person, will not be occurring. So that has been taken off the the table. Um, I'm wondering if any people had other thoughts on how to proceed. Um, we've done some, uh, we've had a few meetings with with a hybrid format. And um any thoughts on how we should keep proceeding? Laura?
I thought I'm proceeding, but I just wanted to apologize. I was unable to forward it because um the automated function that fills in people's email addresses wasn't working. So I apologize.
You'll get it tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Yeah, so um I paraphrased what was in that email. So um, so my sense is that people would like to keep meeting for council remotely. And um I don't, I don't know if we need to vote on that. It's pretty much what we're already doing. The, and maybe we just keep moving forward with our committees, occasionally dabbling in doing the in-person hybrid format, which I think has been interesting. And I think it's actually been pretty effective to have the the smaller committees, you know, meeting in person and and having those discussions. So um if, if, so that's how I'd like to proceed. Um, and uh, until I hear otherwise. I, and Counselor Jared.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue meeting remotely. I think it enables uh a number of of counselors to to be with their, home with their children or um out at uh, you know, shift, moving from work to this, et cetera. I do would like some guidance about, you know, at some point, you know, tying this in some way to the level of community transmission or whether there's a mass advisory or not. Thinking about it in that way so that, uh, as as if we could meet more in person. And and remember, only a quorum would be, no, no, I don't know if there's any require, I'm not sure if there's a requirement at all that that a quorum with this, with this continued exemption of a quorum be in person. But figuring all of that out and um, you know, ma- making some sort of determination based on the safety.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes, um, I I guess because Laura has sent a letter to us. I have not seen that email. And I'm going to have some time to read that. But right now, myself and for the protection of my family and everything, I feel safe by working on my computer until further notice that I know that our city of Northampton is safe also. I'm very unsettled with this right now. I don't mind, like Counselor Jared had mentioned, on some of our subcommittees that we have of going in in person. But right now with City Council, I am very hesitant about that. Do I want to come back? Yes, I do. But to be honest with you, I am not ready to come back. I have right now on my ward, people already who have had all their shots and they have come down with COVID and they are very, very sick. So I I don't know. I'm just uncomfortable with this.
Okay. Counselor Maori.
I was just gonna, um, I was just gonna add that I'll be very interested to hear um what the select committee has to say about participation. Uh, as Counselor LaBarge was speaking, I was thinking, yeah, like tonight, we would have had twenty-two people in a room together. And I was thinking, well, no, maybe just they just join because it's remote. And I find that, you know, it, so either way, you know, you're getting more participation because it's remote or, you know, or we're facing, you know, larger crowds for full council meetings in person. But anyway, I'm just looking forward to seeing if the select committee has anything to add about participation and and meeting format.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for continuing to wrestle with this. And I want to thank um uh Community Resources and Legislative Matters for trying out some hybrid meetings. And um, and that if committees feel moved to try that out, go right ahead. But it seems to me that we should consider, we we should just keep meeting remotely like we're doing. And it's likely we're going to have that okay um when the governor signs the legislation. So. And I don't think we need to vote on this, do we, Laura? No, I think it's, okay. So we're going to keep doing what we've been doing. And so, any more discussion on that item? Okay, seeing none. That brings us to new business. Any new business? I'm looking at some of the counselors' eyes and they're going like, no, no, don't do that. Okay, I'm, I'm hearing no new business. So that brings us to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Perry, seconded by.
Again.
Counselor Maori. Okay. Uh, Laura, roll call on adjournment.
Counselor Jared.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Moulton.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
Counselor Elkins.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned.